I have a meeting to order, please stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have recognitions and cheers for peers. Andrea.
Okay, big drink of water before I start going. So excited again, we're kind of getting into more of a rotation of every other month as we're moving forward with the cheers for peers because it's hard to have the nominations occur the same time that we're awarding them. So I think this is going to get into a nice flow. And so we are excited to announce this month's winners. So first up is Amber Harkemshimer. I knew I was going to kill the last name and I know her and I apologize to Amber in advance. But she's an English teacher at the high school and has been with the district for one year, so first year teacher here. She was nominated by Kim Banky, Arianna Wirebaugh, and Cheryl Militano. Amber is full of energy and sees the positive in all situations. She supports me and helps me have a more open perspective. Amber is not only a super positive and bright individual that has built amazing connections with students. She has also shared how she does Socratic seminar with me in her documents, so I was able to do it in AP German. Amber is a constant marigold. It is easy to become jaded within this line of work and Amber's constant positivity, her ability and willingness to look for the positives, and even in the most negative situations, gives me hope. Her presence is infectious and the optimism she brings each and every day is fantastic. Next up is Ryan De La Croix, who was here and I think he just scooted away. But he is our auditorium and technology supervisor and has been with the district for five years and he was nominated by Donald. Ryan makes HSD a better place by his presence here. He's always kind and friendly in all interactions. He is a wonderful resource and will always take the time from his busy schedule to assist a coworker who needs help. Multi-talented, he directed the HS musical, which was a huge success and had top-notch reviews. We're very fortunate to have Ryan on staff. Then we have Kelsey Austin. She's a speech language pathologist at North Hudson and has been with the district for 10 years and she was nominated by a coworker. Kelsey is a kind and caring speech teacher who works to meet and support the needs of the students she works with. When possible, she works to push into a student's classroom to support the child there. She also continues to be flexible when having to reschedule meetings due to those darn snow days. Okay, congratulations also to Chad Rossi. He is the lead custodian at the middle school and has been with the district for 10 years. He was nominated by Laura Finnegan and the entire new duty crew at Hudson Prairie. Chad had to take over this position suddenly and he has done just a bang-up job so far. He's organized, helpful, friendly, and he sees what needs to be done and takes care of it right away. This nomination comes from the entire new duty crew. We are so happy to have him. Then we have Bev Marion. She is administrative assistant to IT department, has been with the district for 18 years. She was nominated by Jenna Strom. I'm nominating Bev because I believe she is not only the perfect person to be the face for the IT department, but for our district as a whole, as she is often one of the first people new staff meet. I often call her the Google of the district as Bev can do it all. She does it with such a positive cheerful can-do attitude that always results in you feeling better about your day. I've heard this so often from staff throughout the years and would love to see her recognized for how hard she works and for always being willing to help out and find a solution for a problem. To me, that's a perfect example of why we have the program to begin with, so we can celebrate staff that we don't always have the opportunity to rave about. So that's, all of these are great examples of it. Cindy Clark is up next. She is a nutrition service worker at the middle school and has been with the district for 12 years. She was nominated by Christine Art. Cindy, with her polite and friendly nature, has been a pleasure to work with all these years and the students would agree. She is sharp and attentive, asks questions, points out mistakes or potential problems, and adapts to change with a positive attitude. Cindy is an asset to our kitchen because she is flexible, willing to learn new things by embracing the challenges and unafraid of the hard work that may be attached. As a result, she has grown 10 feet tall with experience she's gained. Thank you Cindy for being a wonderful team player and friend. Big breath. Now we have Kelly Heft. She is an administrative assistant at Rivercrest and has been with the district for 10 years. She was nominated by quite a few, Kate Barch, Corey Rogers, Veronica Guzman, Kim Larson, Rachel Miller, and Marnie Boquet. Kelly is an incredible asset to our Rivercrest community. She continually goes above and beyond to help our staff, students, and families get the information they need. She manages multiple tasks, huge responsibilities, and all the day-to-day operations of the office with such grace and proficiency. Kelly never hesitates to help more than is needed and her kindness lights up our office. We are beyond fortunate to have her smiling face at Rivercrest. Kelly will always stop when she's, what is she, what she is doing to help a staff member, student, or parent with a question or a need. She's a friendly face that greets all who come through the doors. Then we have Brent Revard. He is a lead custodian at Willow River and has been with the district for seven years. He was nominated by Michelle Hagan. Parking at Willow River can be a challenge when there is snow. Well, even when there's not snow, it can be a challenge. But nevertheless, when you leave late, you will sometimes find your car completely plowed in. After particularly snowy day, I was not dressed for the weather and dreaded trying to get to my car, get my car out of the snowbank. It was a pleasant surprise to find my car completely shoveled out with a path to my car door. I've seen this PM crew doing this for a lot of staff at night this year. These staff already have regular duties and have had to add a lot of shoveling this year with all the snow. Additionally, I want to mention that Brent has a positive and friendly attitude every day and is always checking in to see if school-age care needs anything. He definitely goes above and beyond. Then we have Kelly Hackarth Miller. She is a language arts teacher at the middle school and has been with the district for 15 years and she was nominated by Angela Gable. I do think I get a little lightheaded as I get through like this far, so if I pass out Dave. For the, yeah, so just, okay, here we go. So she was nominated by Angela Gable. Kelly understands that social emotional well-being plays a role in doing your academic best. When things are going well for you and you're feeling good, you will do better with your learning. She takes time to support students when she can and if it seems to be more than what she can provide, she always reaches out to the counselors for support. Her compassion is endless and so appreciated. Last but not least, Shane McGee. He is the head custodian at EP Rock and has been with the district for 17 years. He was nominated by Michelle Beer and the entire third grade team at EP Rock. Shane is one of the main reasons that EP Rock is a safe, inviting, and warm place for staff and students to be. We are so thankful for his endless snow blowing, tending to requests in our classroom, and much more. Not only does, does he do all of this, he is also warm and welcoming to students. They get so excited when they see him walking the hallways and in the lunchroom. He truly cares about each of them and the school. So, perfect way to end. That's our cheers for peers for the month.
All right, yes.
Congratulations to all recipients, of course. I'd just like to call out Amber Harkemshimer, who knew her as a student here in the district, graduate, and always a smile on her face, just amazing. So glad to hear that she's doing well as a new teacher.
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Bob just said. I remember her as a student as well. Can't remember which year it was that she graduated from Hudson, but she's somewhere between my kids. So anyway, it was good to, good to see that we have folks becoming staffs that graduated from our high school and not to slight the others because it's also great to see the diversity of positions that people recognize are vital to providing the education we can do. It's not just certified staff, but everybody, so. Anyone else?
Jamie, I would echo that. What I was thinking as we flipped through those and in prior, prior months as well, while we do know how important it is to have really excellent teachers in the classroom, we also know that all of the staff in our buildings play a huge factor and sometimes it's not a teacher, but a number of member of our staff that really makes meaningful connections with, with a particular kid. So I really appreciate that this program is, yes, recognizing teaching staff, but also recognizing all of the staff in our building. So kudos.
All right. I was never a cheerleader, but, so I don't know what cheer we would lead, but let's give them a round of applause. All right, now we move on to reports. We have actually six sections and Dave, yours is first.
Thank you very much. So excited to bring forward our suggestion or recommendation for the elementary science resource. Invited Lisa Skoye to present. She's done a lot of great work with the elementary science committee. When we think about elementary science, we think about kids engaged, having fun, hands-on experimentation, all those things we really value. The elementary schedule in the last few years has become very, very tight, just a lot of expectations, a lot of things teachers need to get done, especially focusing on literacy and math. It takes up a lot of time and we felt that science was definitely in need of a recharge. So we were happy to find a resource through a pretty arduous process that matches those needs. So tonight Lisa is going to present on a resource that balances and leverages technology, but also hands-on thinking or hands-on experimentation, but most importantly, higher-order thinking. So with that, oh, also I want to mention that every year when we bring a major curricular initiative or resource forward, we review the curriculum improvement process a little bit because it's such a cornerstone, absolutely important process that guides all of the work we do in teaching and learning. So Lisa will guide you through that a little bit as she explains the process that led us to this recommendation. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening. I am here tonight to share details about the K-5.
Excuse me, is your microphone up?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, it should be up instead of down. Yeah. And sometimes we have to speak abnormally close to the microphone in order for it to be picked up.
Are we good? All right, so last fall, Teaching and Learning invited publishers to participate in our K-5 science request for proposal process. We had nine publishers share sample materials and information about their resources. The science committee reviewed sample materials from all of the publishers who submitted proposals and passed the initial criteria established by Teaching and Learning. The science committee used the resource rubric, which is the yellow document in your folder, to write the resources. After reviewing the responses, we narrowed the list from nine to three. The final three included FOSS, Exploring Science, and Mystery Science. In January, the final three publisher representatives presented the resources to the elementary science committee. Once again, the science committee rated the resources using the rubric and included a rank order. Eighteen of the 22 science committee members ranked Mystery Science as their first choice. Your folder includes the rubric questions and responses for Mystery Science. Teaching and Learning reviewed the responses and feedback from the science committee and selected Mystery Science as the K-5 resource. Mystery Science includes digital science lessons built on students' questions about the world around them. Tonight, I'd like to share a sample of a fourth grade electrical energy lesson. What if there were no electricity?
Hi, it's Doug. Wait, don't touch that. You've heard that before. This is the thing we're all told from the time we can first walk. Don't touch that outlet. It's dangerous. Don't stick anything in that outlet. Well, okay, except for things that are supposed to be plugged into it. Even then, the first time a kid learns to plug something in properly, parents often feel nervous about it. It's true, there's danger with electricity. You could get really hurt if you messed with an outlet. You could get electrocuted. But the danger of electricity also makes it mysterious, doesn't it? Like, what's back there behind the outlet? Is there like a blue ball of lightning buzzing around? Where does electricity come from? And what is electricity? I mean, did someone invent it? Or has it always been here? You see what I mean? There's so much mystery about electricity, so many interesting questions we can ask about it. Today, let's focus on trying to figure out what electricity is. In order to find out, we have to know more about what electricity does. There's no better way to appreciate what electricity can do than a power outage. You ever had that happen? Sometimes it happens when a storm knocks down an electrical power line. You might be at home or maybe you're out shopping and suddenly, oh, the lights are flickering and the power goes out. How is your life different when there's a power outage? Take a moment now and think about what kinds of things you lose the ability to do. Think about all the things that stop working when the power goes out.
So the first video sets the stage for learning and has students think about what electricity does by drawing from their background knowledge about power outages. There are questions that are shown right here on the screen following the videos that allows students to turn and talk to a friend, have a small group conversation, or have a large group discussion. So you can go one more slide, one more click. The second video clip, which we're not going to watch, actually continues to build background knowledge by providing more examples of things that use electricity daily. And once again, ends with the conversation, the discussion questions for students, and even provides a little bit of a hint.
So the reason we have outlets all over our homes and schools is because electricity or electrical energy is such an amazing form of energy. Not only can it make things move, like subways and elevators, but it can also light things up and even be used to make things hot or cold. But plugging things into wall outlets, that's not the only way to power electrical devices. They can be powered by batteries too. A battery is something that stores electrical energy and most batteries, especially the smaller kind that you can find in stores, are a safer strength of electrical energy than what comes out of the outlet. It's one we could actually experiment with to learn more about. Now, here are a few things you might already know about batteries and about electrical energy, but I'll mention them here just in case it's new to you or if you need a reminder. One thing you might know is that just like the energy you can trace in a chain reaction machine, electrical energy always moves along a pathway. It goes from one point to another. But electrical energy is special. It has some of its own rules. One of those rules is that electrical energy won't move along just any pathway. It will only move along a pathway made out of certain materials. Copper is a good example. The electrical energy in your home or any battery-powered devices is usually flowing along wires made out of copper on the inside. Aluminum is another example. Wires can be made out of aluminum. The wires that hang on power lines are usually made out of aluminum. We say that copper and aluminum are electrical conductors, which just means they're a type of material that allows electrical energy to flow through them. There are metal wires in almost everything that runs on electrical energy, not just the things you plug in. Like, have you ever looked closely at a light bulb? You can see there on the inside, it's got two little wires. You can also see it in this type of light bulb called an LED. An LED even has the wires sticking out on either end. Whenever a light bulb is on, electrical energy is flowing through those wires. Now, here's one last rule that's special to electricity. Have you ever noticed this on a battery? Every battery has two different ends or two different sides. And on one side, you can always find a little plus sign painted on. Sometimes on the other side, you'll see a negative sign. You see that? Whenever you hook a wire up to a battery, you give it a path. And electrical energy always flows from the negative side of the battery to the positive side of the battery. But until you give it a path, the electrical energy stays inside the battery. So those are the rules. Electrical energy needs a path. The path has to be made out of material like copper or aluminum. And in a battery, the electrical energy flows along the path from negative to positive. Now, let's put some of this knowledge to use and investigate something. It's time for today's activity.
So the video that you just watched is the focus part of the lesson, which provides the information for students to complete the activity. In this activity, Build a Flashlight, students investigate how electrical energy requires a circuit and they make mini flashlights from LEDs, button batteries, and strips of aluminum foil. Then the lesson ends with a review of the concepts and more questions for students to think about. So now that we've selected a resource, the final steps for the science committee members include a development of our scope and sequence, development of assessments, and the fine-tooth comb review for bias. Does anybody have any questions?
Before, before questions, just a few, a few comments. First of all, thank you Lisa very much for the work that you've done and a big thanks to the committee. They've done outstanding work to get us here. Lisa and I had the opportunity at one of our schools to watch a teacher that was piloting this program. When Mystery Science Doug came on the screen, they were so excited. They were ready. They're like, okay, now we know it's science time. So to see the level of engagement with the kids is very exciting. That video component is really unique in that what it does, it allows the teacher not to focus on necessarily delivering that content, but working with small groups or working with individuals, making sure everyone's engaged and answering any questions if there's confusion. And then it always leads to that hands-on experiment of some sort. So we're really excited to see where this can go and look forward to the next step. So now, you can ask questions.
Okay, Molly?
I wish I had had this when I was at school. So much fun. I, I was wondering, because it has the video component to it, is it, how does that make it for, if a kid misses a few days because they're sick or something, is it maybe easier for them to catch up or can they watch videos at home to kind of keep up with their classwork? How does that work?
I think that's a really good question. I would think that when they would come back to school, because it is an online resource that actually, you know, it's, they can just sit and they can pull up the video and they can watch what they've missed. Where sometimes when a student is sick at home and they miss instruction, it's hard to replicate that because the teacher's already taught the lesson, they've moved on and is teaching something else. So I think, I mean, I really didn't even think about that, that component, how great it would be for students to come back and be able to watch the lesson that they missed when they were home.
Yeah, I, it seems so engaging. Like, I can totally see how kids would just love it. And it's presented in such a way that it's very accessible, you know, for, for everybody. So thank you. Looks awesome.
Yes, Heather, you had a question?
Well, this makes me think of, I think maybe two years ago at the state school board convention, one of the keynotes, one of the phrases that stuck with me was that teachers are no longer charged with delivering content because the content is there. Teachers are charged with delivering experiences. And so I really appreciate your comment about, because I can see how someone might watch this and go, well then what do we need teachers for? Someone, and that, that shift really in, in pedagogy and what our, what our teachers are doing in classrooms, that yes, this video helps deliver the content so that the teacher can be really focusing on, on individualizing attention and instruction for kids or small groups related to that content. So I really appreciate that. The other thing I would just mention is I'm, and I'm happy to hear that one of the considerations was hands-on experience. I still remember the day, shout out to North Hudson Elementary teacher Brian Burbach, that my fifth grader came home from the first day of class and said, "Mom, other kids were learning. We were blowing stuff up." So, didn't realize that Brian actually was teaching something. But I think for so many kids, that hands-on component, that's where they put it all together. And so I'm really happy to hear that that's an integrated and a presumed part of the curriculum is that they get kids doing things. So pleased to hear that. So thank you very much for all of your work on this.
And your son is studying to be what type of engineer now?
Well, he's studying to be an environmental engineer at UW Madison. Thanks for asking, Bob.
No, great report. Thank you for that. I, I guess, I was just curious, do we get that kind of consensus? You said 18 of 22 made this resource the number one or was their first choice. Do we see that often in the other disciplines?
Often we do actually, which is surprising. If you engage in the work, use the solid rubric that's aligned to our expectations, it tends to guide us in a, in a direction where people can agree, but not always quite that much. So we're always pleased to see that, knowing that it's, it's, it's fun when you get to roll out something for teachers that they're excited about upfront. Makes a difference.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, so when do we get, what's the next area that we're going to be reviewing on this, on the teaching and learning, you know, curriculum? Okay, all right, excellent. I'd like to hear what's going on at all levels, but yeah, good to see that we're, you know, pursuing constant improvement. So, all right. Next up, I guess Nick, just turn it over to you and you're gonna run through these.
I have a slew of reports for you. So just a couple reminders, the upcoming referendum community engagement dates. We did have our first community engagement meeting was last Thursday. It went well. We had good questions from the crowd. Allows us to adjust our frequently asked questions and get more information out there for folks. But upcoming, upcoming dates, we have February 22, which would be not, not this week, but next Wednesday, we will be at the middle school. Then March 21st will be a virtual one Zoom. So if people can't make it because they have childcare responsibilities and things like that, they can click in and Zoom. And then March 23rd will be at North Hudson Elementary School as far as our large-scale community means. There are lots of other meetings that we're doing, other community groups we're speaking with. I think the Chamber's coming up. Is that in a week? I think we're speaking with the Chamber of Commerce folks. We've already spoke with Rotary. We have different church groups, parent groups, booster groups. If there is a group you feel like we should talk to or touch on, we absolutely will. We just want to make sure we're getting the information out about what exactly the referendum questions are and what we are asking. Next one on the list there is the January official student counts. So as you can see, actually our January counts are slightly better than our, slightly better than our September counts. We actually picked up about 18 kids, still down, probably close to 80 kids compared to the previous year, but we did add an additional 18 kids. The only number I really want to really highlight with this and then, you know, we'll go through some of this at a later date is our open enrollment. If you can see, we have about 50 more kids open enrolling in than open enrolling out. Just eight years ago, I remember when we got here, we were running about a million-dollar open enrollment deficit. So it was probably close to 70 or 80 kids open enrolling out, or more open enrolling out than open in. So we've turned that deficit around and now, you know, we have more coming in than out. And so that is a real positive number. We want to make sure that we are touching on. And what we'll be able to do also, like you said, at a later date, we'll be able to give you some additional enrollment history. Both, we, we track our private providers, both St. Pat's and Trinity, and also our homeschool numbers. One number on there, people say, well, gosh, it seems like we had a huge number change in our homeschool from September to January. The January count is the most accurate count because the deadline for submitting paperwork for homeschooling comes after that September deadline. So really, not comparing September to January, but really comparing January to January, year after year. It's been a pretty consistent number with our biggest abnormality was back, you know, that COVID year, 2020, fall of 2020. But these have kind of settled back into what, what's historically kind of been the case, but we track those as well.
So Nick, to clarify, we district-wide have a total of 25 students being homeschooled right now? Is that the number we're looking at? Or is it 25 plus 14?
No, at the very, at the very bottom. So down there, about 160, sorry, 162 students homeschooling.
So what are the homes, what are the numbers up above that, that are homeschooled? Oh, that's just the, the ones that are receiving partial services?
Yes.
In the far-right home. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks, yep.
And so, you know, and again, with homeschooling, there's a requirement that if you're going to homeschool, you're supposed to be reporting at the district of resident. But if you were to have somebody move new to our district and they never register their kid and they, they just homeschool, it's more of an honor system or anything. But the expectation is that they do register. That's not our expectation, that's the state law. So, next one, just a reminder on the student registration kindergarten and 4K. It is underway. It opened on Friday. Last Friday, we already have folks that are registering. The one thing we remind people is in order to register their kids for school, you need to have some type of proof of residency, immunization records, and then, you know, proof of birth, full name, things along those lines. So we just, in order to make sure that they're actual resident students in our district and that they meet the age requirements for enrollment into the district. When we started doing 4K, which was back in 2017 maybe, Dave, or was it 2018? 17 or 18, I can't remember which one. That really changed this process because kindergarten roundup was a bigger deal. And now, because we have so many kids involved in our 4K programming, somewhere between, what'd you say, 83 and 84%? About 83% of our kids that are in our kindergarten class are usually accounted for in our, in our 4K programming. So, so we have a pretty good handle of what's, what's coming into our kindergarten classes based on, on the numbers for 4K.
I was curious, on the registration, if you had a parent that had, you know, a youngster that was going to be turning four, let's say, September 15th. Is that somebody that legally can't or they could be brought into the 4K program if they show certain things? I mean, is there, what's the cutoff date for? I mean, is there, what's the cutoff date for dates of birth and any absolutes in that regard?
Yeah, by September one. There are caveats for early entrance, but that's for kindergarten. We typically don't do early entrance into four K. That's just so young to know how they'll track in the future. But there are some carve-outs for early entrance to kindergarten, which is a pretty detailed process.
Okay. I was just curious on that. Having a grandson that's mid-September birthday, you know, either you're gonna be the oldest one in the class or the youngest one in the class, but, all right.
All right. Keep motoring through. A lot of these are just more reminders than anything. February twenty-first, what you see up here is a link to the sample ballot. There is a primary on February twenty-first, both for the Supreme Court and the school district. Those I believe are the only two primaries that I'm aware of in our district. Yep. Well, but I mean, they could be different depending on the municipality. But I, I'm not aware of any municipalities that are requiring a primary at this time. So you can see the actual sample ballot. So that is next Tuesday. Just want to make sure, remind people to vote in that election. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on briefly, and we are somewhat limited on what we can touch on with this, is, you know, follow up to the statement that the district put out about a week or two ago, related to the situation that occurred at the high school where we worked with the Hudson Police Department and St. Cora County Drug Task Force to investigate drugs at the high school. There's not a lot I can say at this time because there's still an ongoing criminal investigation. And whenever we have these types of things, what I can tell you is the school investigation and the criminal investigation kind of run, they run side by side of each other. And so the school district runs their own investigation. And a lot of times we work in conjunction with law enforcement and things along those lines. But because law enforcement is still working through their investigation, there's just not a lot I can talk about right now. However, we are gonna be adding either to the February work session or the March work session. We're looking at bringing in some different folks, experts in the field, to be able to answer questions and kind of talk about what they're seeing out there, what we're, what we're doing, how we're adjusting to try to do everything we can to combat drugs in our, in our buildings. And so, any questions about, about that item?
Thanks, Nick. Well, I, I appreciate that. And I think, and, you know, we exchanged emails about this. I, I think justly so, there has been a, a response from the community saying kind of, hey, well, some say the school needs to do more, some say we collectively need to do more. So I think, yes, I would like to see us hear from some of the folks who are closest to this problem, but also to kind of maybe remind us and inform folks in the community who might think that we're not already doing things at our schools, that we do have AODA programs in place. They might need some changes, but I think to ground us in what's in place, to ground us in kind of the current realities, maybe hearing from our counseling and AODA staff, maybe hearing from local law enforcement or local mental health providers, and then a conversation here, and I'm sure it's already happening with staff about what might we need to do differently as this has become more and more of a problem in our, in our schools. So I look forward to that, both information and discussion at our work sessions.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything more on that?
No, that's it for my reports.
All right. Very good. Next up, we have citizens' request to speak about non-action items. I'll just remind the folks, public comment is for input only. This is not a question-answer session, time for debate or dialogue session. Members of the board will not respond directly to public comments that are made at this meeting. No specific action will be taken at this meeting in response to comments that are made or issues that are raised during the public comment period. If the board determines that action is appropriate, the action will occur at future board meeting. A district representative may follow up with any speaker after the meeting. The board chair will recognize one speaker at a time. Only those speakers who are recognized are permitted to speak. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the board or the proceedings may be directed to leave. Obviously, personal attacks on any individual, including any other speaker during the public comment session are unacceptable, as are obscenities or profanity. Persistence in making such remarks will end the individual's opportunity to address the board and may result in the individual being directed to leave. We have two persons that have submitted. I guess we have a third one on the way, but I'll take them in the order. Your time will, you have three minutes, so your time will begin when you approach the microphone. First up is John Dolan from Hudson. He's speaking on space planning and Title IX.
Okay, John Dolan from Hudson, Wisconsin. Hello, everybody. Haven't been able to come before because of my work schedule, out of the country, traveling, whatever. So I wanted to make sure that I came here in person. I wanted to say thank you to everybody for all your work that you do for us. I know it's a tough job. So first I wanted to say thanks for everybody. I know there's been a lot going on in the last three years. Okay, there is, I have kids in the district. I have four kids. So I have a North Hudson student, I have Holton students, I've had kids at Rivercrest. See many schools here, so I see, see lots. The first one, which is very briefly, I was wondering if there could be some information posted either online or provided about the Title IX sports requirements for the high school, specifically in regards to boys and girls gymnastics? Just to understand, do they count towards the total or do they not count? Do we have to offer them the balancing of the number of sports, et cetera? Haven't been able to find anything about that. And then my bigger topic, I just wanted to make sure that I put this out there is, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent supportive of the operating referendum. Think that's really good. Really, really happy we're doing that. The Capitol referendum, I'm generally really supportive of it. I think that the story and the messaging from it still leaves something to be desired about what is the story we're trying to tell. I'm here as like concerned parents, taxpayer, I'm a facilities guy. I've emailed you guys all a lot. You're probably sick of my information, but here I am. The story of what's supposed to happen in North Hudson and why really hasn't been consistent. So I missed the community meeting, but I read through all the information. And the story has kind of changed on North Hudson from, hey, we need a new gym because of gymnastics, to now it's, hey, we need a new gym for gymnastics and we're gonna go build a new dedicated cafeteria space. And we're gonna go build a library. So whereas one room used to be the cafeteria and the gym, now it's going to be new gym, new cafeteria space, a gymnastics gymnasium, and then a library. And it feels like you really wouldn't change one space into four unless there's other directions that are going on of like, hey, the district is growing. We need all this space, et cetera. And the messaging doesn't seem like it matches with what's going on, especially because the topic of a whole new library, a whole new library addition being to the building has never been talked about and it's never been posted anywhere before the information meeting for April fourth. I think I'm just out of about time. I've got three minutes, right?
You have ten seconds left.
Okay, that's it. I'm glad I finished on time. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, good. All right. So we're down to the two speakers. But next up, Richard Thompson from Fifty-S sixth Street, Hudson. Speaking of safety in schools.
Richard Thompson from Hudson, Wisconsin. First off, I, first time to your board meeting. And I met Dr. O'Mallett and Mr. Johnson a few days ago at one of the referendum meetings. And it's a great conversation. They answered a lot of questions for me. It was really great. But I'm coming tonight with, I think, even a bigger concern. And I'm not sure that you're aware of it because sometimes at the school board, you're not aware of what's going on at the student level. You try to be, but it's quite a distance away. So I want to let you know about this because I just found out about it this weekend. A lot of girls in the high school are not drinking water all day so that they don't have to use the bathroom because they don't want to go in the bathrooms with the drug and vaping issues that are going on. And they're afraid. So that's why I'm here tonight, just to make you aware of that issue because I think safe schools are actually about a hundred times more important than the referendum. I mean, I know at the referendum meeting, we were talking about enrollment going down and that's why the referendum needs to go up. Well, if this problem doesn't get fixed, enrollment's gonna really go down because this is a wealthy community and people will take their kids and go. And I think, I mean, this is a legitimate concern that I just found out about this weekend. So I don't know, you know, if we gotta put monitors in the bathroom, if we gotta bring drug dogs, and what we gotta do, that's, that's to you. That's not to me. But you needed to be made aware of it because you got girls going all day not drinking so they don't have to use the bathrooms in the high school after this whole thing with the drugs. So that's all I got. I think I made my three minutes. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you for your comments. As you said, folks may follow up with you and, you know, these things can be addressed at future meetings. Next up, we have our action items. First, we have a consent agenda and I'll entertain a motion for approval with the verbiage regarding expenditures. Does anyone have that? Okay, good.
Mr. President, move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, eight hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and eight cents.
Second.
All right. Motion by Kerry, second by Bob. There's no discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay, and the ayes have it. Next up, we have the Whitcomb petition to transfer property.
Yes, we spoke about this at the work session in January. So this is a petition from an individual that, on the north side of the district, that would like their property annexed into the Hudson School District. It is part of an island from the Somerset School District. So as you are looking at statutory basis for making a decision, one of the, one of the main items in there is if the territory to be proposed be detached from one school district, is it going to be part of an adjoining or is it gonna create an island? It actually helps reduce the amount of islands. And actually, both of these properties that are on the list, I think are right next to each other. Is that right, Tim?
Correct.
And so they would both like in to the Hudson School District. They are adjacent to the Hudson School District and they would reduce the island that is, that is currently out there trying to fill that, fill that in. So the residents, you can see the information or the owners of the property, and they have submitted their applications. Again, you guys can accept the application to allow them into the district as far as the property to be transferred from the Somerset District to the Hudson School District. However, it is the sending district or the district that would be losing the property would also have to say, yes, we're okay with losing that property. And as we all know, rarely does that, does that happen. And then if they say no, then the petitioners would have the ability to file an appeal, I believe with the Department of Public Instruction to try to get the denial over, overruled. I would tell you, the administration's recommendation for both of these parcels, because they fall along the same lines, is to allow them into the Hudson School District.
Is there any questions regarding this? Do we have, or do we have a motion?
Move to approve the petition? Is approve the right verb there? Move to approve the petition.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right. We have a second by Molly. Any further discussion? I would just note that attached to each of these requests, there are the statutory basis for making a decision and, you know, there's various factors that have to be weighed, including the financial impacts or fiscal effects, the, whether or not there'd be, have to be a reorganization, the, even the geographical and topographical characteristics of the affected districts and impacts on travel time for students and so forth. But in looking at all these factors, it would certainly look towards approval given, as was noted on the outline, that this property is already surrounded by Hudson School District.
Mr. President? I did have a resident ask me about this. And as far as, if they're, I'll just ask the question. As far as this isn't like another burden or more busing or a different route that we're already going into these areas, correct?
Yep, we're already, we are already in these areas. Like I said, this, these two properties are basically surrounded by our district. They're one of the few islands left. Yeah.
No, that's, all right. So any further questions? As Nick pointed out, this was discussed at the work session and, you know, these petitions, they vary in, I guess, they're, you know, being pertinent to all the factors. And this one is one of the more pertinent ones that I've seen, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, the second parcel, Nick, is the, called the Leverti petition.
Yep.
But this is the, it looks like it's directly below the one that we just approved?
Correct. So for the same reasons that we just talked about, we are already running buses by that area. Neither of these two properties are gonna have tremendous financial impact one way or the other as they sit. Long-term could be developed into housing, but again, three-acre lot minimums. It's not like there's going to be hundreds of houses up there. As you can see, some of those lot sizes around there. But the administration's recommendation would be, again, to approve this considering all the other things that, as Jamie said, are statutorily needed for making that decision that you guys discussed actually at the work session three weeks ago.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Bob, second by Molly. Any further discussion? Hearing seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the petition is approved. So both petitions having been approved, we now move on to the purchasing card resolution or P-card that was presented at our last work session. Nick, this is yours.
Yep. I'll take this one since Bonnie's not here. So P-card, what it is, it just, it's, one of the things that's required for us to enroll in this program is the board has to make a resolution in order to enroll. This program is just, we have district-held credit cards. Currently, they're all individual credit cards. What this program allows us to do is to manage them internally a little bit easier, change limits, revoke cards, things like that. Just making things a lot easier in how we handle district credit cards compared to what we've done in the past. There's also some level of rebate, I think, on all purchases. The majority of the purchases in the district all happen through a purchase order system. But there are some, some things we can't use purchase orders on that require us to use district credit cards. And that's just switching to this new system, P-card system. Bonnie, I think, explained it more in depth to you at the work session on the twenty-seventh, or actually the twenty, twenty-fourth of January. So nothing has changed. It's her same recommendation that she, that she gave. So the administration's recommendation would be to approve the resolution.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of individual procurement cards as linked in the board packet.
All right. We have a motion, a second by Kerry. Any further discussion? These, thank you for the explanation of purchasing card, but it seemed like the advantages were, you know, definitely there. I would say outweighed particularly to the tune of a twelve-thousand-dollar estimated rebate. I guess it's better than paying something out, so getting something back. Any further questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the purchasing card resolution indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Last up, we have the twenty-three, twenty-four school age care fees. This is a time of year where we consider for the next school year. And Tracy, this is yours.
Yes. So this is the same document that you reviewed at the board work session in January. So nothing has changed on this. And as stated in the document, we're looking at a nominal increase to cover inflation.
And that increase is roughly about five percent. So our recommendation would be to approve the new fee structure.
Mr. President, just maybe because it's not in the summary, thank you. We were able to review a longer document and have some conversation at the work session. But one of the things that you did share, Tracy, is that these are the full fees and that students who qualify for free and reduced lunch also have the ability to apply for and receive discounted fees for their school age care, correct?
Correct. Correct.
And this recommended increase is something that's going to be relatively, the fiscal impact is fairly neutral then, given the rates of inflation and so forth?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve the various rates. We, I don't think the motion needs to specify every rate being approved, but we've got.
His percentage would be fine.
Yeah. It's, we've got eight different rates depending on, you know, what program and so forth. But I think it's a motion to approve as presented is appropriate.
Mr. President, I have moved to approve the recommended school age care fees for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Heather, second by Bob. Any further questions or concerns? Guess the only other concern that we ask every year, as well as, you know, we keep ourselves competitive but not overly undercut our community neighbors.
Correct. We always look at the comparables to make sure that we're not pricing ourselves so low that we are overly competitive or drawing more families to our services.
All right. All right. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution for the new rates for twenty-three, twenty-four childcare, or school age care, please indicate aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it. And now entertain a motion to adjourn since we're through the agenda.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right. Kerry says that very excitedly. All right.
Second.
And Molly, seconds. Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay, we are adjourned.